My pleasure, Legion, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no additional agenda items to add. We'll move on down to the open business. On the R3, Dan Brown, City Manager. You there, Dan?
There he is.
Hi, good afternoon.
Yeah. We've got Nick Green, City Manager of Burns.
John Day.
Or Jon Day, excuse me. And we've got Michelle. Is here. So we're gonna turn her over to you guys, all three of you.
Well, I'll start real quick. Um, we met with each counselor last week up in Burns, and we decided together that we were going to pare down the scope of what R3's intentions were. Um, we were finding that it was overwhelming communities, and we wanted to alleviate that by making R3 focus on housing and broadband. So, um, we have spoken about bringing 100 houses to each city in the next five years. And we are also wanting to bring broadband into Burns and Lakeview. Jon Day certainly has broadband already. So, um, be ready for the IGA to change in its scope. And within the IGA, we're gonna outline the different projects that each town will be working towards. So, um, and we would like to bring that new agreement to council for our towns on April 12th and April 13th. And, um, we would also like to start advertising for hiring an executive director for the R3 entity. So, did I get that right, guys? Okay, good. So I think that there's been a lot of questions, um, about is there going, are we taking over and eliminating construction jobs? Are we eliminating paving jobs? Um, and none of those are true. So, um, I don't, I don't know where they came from or how they came to be, but that's certainly not what our intention is for R3. Um, is, do you guys have any questions that you want to ask? Or, um, Nick has a drop at 4:30. Um, I think Dan can stay. So if you have questions for either Nick or Dan, now would be the time to ask them. Or any concerns or, um, anything under this slide, now would be the time to ask.
Well, I will bring up just things that I'm hearing, okay? And, you know, the rumor wise, you know, through the things. Um, the 100 houses, personally, I think that that is way more than what we need to be starting with to make this work. You know, if it's going to work.
Okay, in five years.
I know, well, I understand that, but I, I, I guess I still have questions about how is it going to be paid? If it's paid under the urban growth renewal, how is it going to hurt the extension office, the cemetery district, the bond, the people that were already paid? You know, are we gonna lose a job at the extension office because we're gonna be taking part of that urban growth money? Are we gonna lose a job at the library? I, I wanna know those things before I decide where we're headed with this. I had, it was interesting, I had a lady at my, at work called regarding where I work, paper. She was from Burns, actually. And what she told me was, she was very, very concerned about this, building these houses, because, and this is what her quote was basically, was that Governor Brown was wanting these 100 houses built in all these three cities because then they will be able to send their homeless to us. Now, do I believe that? No, okay? But, but that's what's out in the community. And I think that that's the message that people are getting because those people are talking about it. And our communication has not been open enough of where we're headed. And so I have a lot of concerns, a lot of questions about, you know, the money and that.
Well, what I'm hearing.
Can I answer that one, Michelle?
Yeah, please do.
So I, and I'm sorry, I can't see anyone on the road, which is fine. And I just can't read body language, so forgive me if I, if I'm interrupting, I'm just sort of fire and blind. Uh, these are good.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Awesome, and you took me off recordings. That was, that was short lived. Um, I, I, these are good points, I've heard of them on day two, so I wanna triage these into three, three responses. Um, let's start with urban renewal, because I think that's the easiest one. Urban renewal does not grant authority to the town of Lakeview to take tax money from anybody. So if those other public agencies that you refer to can afford their staff today, they can report them tomorrow and for the next 20 years. What changes is any new taxes that are created within that up to 20% land area that you designate as urban renewal. Those new taxes that are on top of the current tax base would go to your urban renewal district and would be used for program-related costs, which under Jon Day's program is land development and incentives on vertical construction. So you, you don't and cannot subtract tax revenue from the existing tax jurisdiction. From the time you freeze the tax base, we're only dealing with future gains. And the way I've explained it to our jurisdictions is it's like deferred compensation. You're delaying your benefit from the increases that would not have happened but for the urban renewal district. So I think that's an important distinction because this idea, and I've heard it here too, oh, we're taking money away from these tax jurisdictions, that's not true. If there's no tax increase within the urban renewal boundary, then everyone would continue to have the exact same amount of tax they have today.
But they don't get a raise, right?
Right.
They don't, they don't get any increase for 25 years.
Well, that's not the way we did it in Jon Day. Okay, you can, you can structure it that way. The way we did it in Jon Day was we said, whatever rebates we offer, I mean, give them piece of land. So let's, let's just take a very simple example. I, I'm in the urban renewal area, I build a house on vacant land. Today, that vacant land is generating $300 a year in tax revenue, and that's being split among eight tax jurisdictions. Tomorrow, because I'm gonna overbuild the house, that, that piece of ground is gonna generate $4,000 in tax revenue with my house on it. The eight jurisdictions still split the 300 that they were getting before, but the 4,000 goes to your urban renewal district. So let's say you offered $20,000 in incentive payments as a result of me spending half a million bucks on a house. And that $4,000 increase over five years comes to the tax district that paid the incentive. And starting in year six, it's split among the remaining jurisdictions. So the way we structured ours, we release the tax increase just as soon as our incentives are paid. And they get to benefit. It's not immediate, but they get to benefit as soon as our investment is recovered. And so what I presented to them was, would you rather have $4,000 a year, every year, started in six years? Or 300, your share of $300 a year in perpetuity because no one built it? And when you frame it that way, it becomes a very simple decision. If you believe that urban renewal works. And in Jon Day, I think we've demonstrated that it has because we were building in our city limits, on average, one home every three years before we implemented the program. Since implementing the program, we've averaged four site-built homes a year. And we're now just allowing the market to do what it wants to do within the district. We have 100 homes permitted through the planning commission and 100 more in urban growth boundary prepared dynamics. So we're actually on target for 200 homes. In Jon Day, just by allowing the market to recover some of those costs of land development and vertical prudence. So that's, just to triage my answer, that, that would be my answer on the URA. And then I, I won't pivot to that number of homes because I think that's also an important distinction to make. The way we're structuring these programs, the government, the cities, are not building housing. We're not going out and recruiting housing developers. We're simply streamlining the entitlement process and making it easier to build in our communities when a developer approaches us. And I, the reason I think that's important to draw that distinction is we're not dictating it's gotta be 100 homes, 100 is a target. If a developer comes and says, hey, I just purchased 18 buildable lots in the neighborhood in the town of Lakeview, as a hypothetical. And I wanna build 18 homes on these lots. Can you help me get through the entitlement process? Meaning, come be prepared, mind my use of units, I'm gonna be packages. Let's look at, can you help me get access to low-cost financing to offset my construction loans? So I'm not paying 7%, maybe get me down to 1% to 2%? Can we work with power co-ops? Maybe amortize the cost of power tensions if that's needed? Can you help get the broadband if it doesn't have it to the site? Removing some of those barriers to development so that it pencils for them to go vertical. The market is deciding what to build, where to build, and when to build it. We're just making it easier for them to do that because right now, our cost in Eastern Oregon, Southern Oregon, to develop land exceeds the value of the land once it's developed. If, if you're in the land development game and you're putting it into city's bank, you're losing money on every single lot. So the idea behind R3 would be, make it easier for the private sector to invest private money in the community. We're being more responsive to them. Um, and, and by being more efficient, reducing costs of the private sector, we're not dictating what needs to be built, when or how. So I've been talking about it a bit, so let me pause. Does that help clarify a little bit two of the, two of the three points?
Yes, it did, thank you.
Okay. Um, and then I guess the third piece that I was gonna add is, um, if we are more responsive to the market and we let, we let builders know that we're gonna be a good partner for them, I think you're going to see a lot more demand than you realize. Just removing system development costs and adding some incentive for vertical construction and offsetting just enough of the land development expenses that Jon Day has taken us from almost no housing at all to a stick-built home on almost everyone. I've got three in construction right now. And I've got those new developments, three master-planted communities going into construction. And I can send you pictures, but we just ordered to help them out. And again, as part of our contribution to land development, we just ordered a quarter million dollars in pipe, water and sewer line. We stockpiled that at the city. And they can acquire that from us and not pay shipping. So these are examples of things that we're doing here to make it easier for them to build. We're basically now their demo. We might bulk, get wholesale discounts, and then they can acquire those assets from us. So we're just trying to get a little bit more creative to help these projects pencil.
Hey, Nick, Michelle?
Go.
One of the, uh, can you guys hear me? Not sure. Yes?
Yes, yes.
Uh, I remember a question that I heard on there was this person that called from Burns and had said, hey, I heard that Governor Brown wants to dump 100 homeless people from Lakeview and Burns under Jon Day. Um, your guess is as good as ours on where that came from. Uh, as soon as you start talking about building homes or trying to incentivize building homes uh, in Eastern Oregon, it's funny because everybody automatically assumes it has low-income housing. That's not what we're talking about, we're trying to incentivize home builders to have market value homes. These are people that are, you know, schoolteachers and, and essentially people that wanna come out and, and clear our community. And some of them bring their own jobs with them, right? I mean, that's, that's where profit. Uh, because COVID's allowed that to happen, right? They can come out. Uh, no one has ever talked about low-income housing. When we first sat down, we were like, what is this thing called? A lot of people have, um, housing sites that have done and based on our current infrastructure and our workplace and all that, if you look in 2020 census, I was just online with the University of Portland today uh, regarding, you know, um, the census and showing that there was kind of a flat decline. Well, since COVID, we've had, we've had a sharp increase in people interested in housing out here. We have three housing developers, one of them really nice. Um, and when we, when we talk about housing, it's people who essentially have to get along with anybody else and go out and get a house. We're, we're not trying to encourage low-income housing. It's illegal for us to prevent low-income housing. Cities could get stinkable. But we're not trying to retreat that. And so that is absolutely pure rumor uh, that, uh, number one, I've had no conversations with Governor Brown. In fact, with the three of us, probably only, only one has ever had great conversation with Governor Brown with the town of Lakeview. They got $15 million grant for water, which is not hard to. So, uh, I mean, it's just that you, you gotta be proud. Uh, but, uh, trust me, I've never had a conversation with Kate Brown nor anybody else, but we go the same numbers here. And, uh, the reality is, that person in Burns has never come to the workshop that we had, just like what you're doing. They've never come to city council, they never pick up the phone at all. It's just pure base.
We lost, yeah, I'm older, yeah.
I think he was gonna say fabrication.
Yeah. Well, it's, like I said, though, I think that we have not communicated well enough about the project.
One of the things I've been hearing from people is that businesses won't come in here, industries won't come in here because we don't have housing, there's not enough housing here for them.
Yep.
And I've been trying to get a grocery store to come in here and there's not any house. So we have to do something. We've gotta get some, somehow, get some help going and get these houses up so we can bring in industries, more businesses, and so forth. We've lost a sample together.
100% connected to, to the vulnerable, and I need to, they are, they see.
Okay, somebody in your neck or down say something.
She'll not.
Try again, I think the reason why I haven't heard a lot about it is because they're still in the planning stages of it.
Yeah.
You know, we're just starting to take off and we haven't really, we went to, let's say. And I learned the whole part. I mean, that's what, it was a draft and, and we just talked about everything and you just went over it. And it was a good thing. And we decided not to do chip sealers and all that stuff, just do two-bank broadband. And, uh,
Yeah, no worries. I led the walk right there. Okay. Talk to you.
Sorry.
Keep talking, like saying the ABCs or something.
Good evening, broadband.
You think?
He was available during a nanny, JVR, he's disconnected.
I don't know what happens, but, that should be.
Your boss is.
Well, uh, sorry, our speakers are not working, I don't know why. I really made an effort to do that.
Trying to disconnect him and then having called back in.
Nah, it's, it's all right. All right, well, I think we lost you guys. So, um, if we have, you can call in. You guys have the call-in number? Oh, wait. No. We'll just take it from.
Nick Green was trying to call your cell phone.
We'll just take it from here. Thanks for coming, you guys. Thanks. All right, sorry, everybody. So we'll let, um, so Jay was at the meeting and then, um, I'll try to answer as many questions as I can.
We should put them on the phone. You could do one phone, I could do the other.
No, I'm just, oh. Hold it, Dan, call. Okay. I'm calling you green. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna put you over by the council because my phone's, okay, there we go. All right. We got you for 5 more minutes.
Um, what I, what I was trying to say, we're cut out. Can you still hear me okay?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Um, we're in pre-application now for our second grocery store that's updating as a result of this housing development question. Um, I can't go to the main store until I actually apply to the, to the, to our team, which is what I see as a really positive indicator that business is working. And yet we, we had a goal, we had a target, we let the market decide what they want to do. We had made some very bullish, there's a lot of interest and investments. And we're, we're just trying to remove some of those barriers that we're seeing commercial development in places where we just haven't seen that before. So I, I would just point your mind toward the future and suggest that if we do our dog drive and it's work, the problem we're gonna face in the future isn't, uh, could you build, could you build 100 homes? It's gonna be, hey, are we growing too fast? Do we need to dial it back? And I don't know about you guys, but I would really like to have that problem for a while. The problem we've had is having, probably stops in the quiet. Um, so I've been fighting a couple of good growth years post-COVID, where we're seeing quite an investment in our community. I think it's healthy, I think it's what we need. I think we just need to keep communicating with the public, the markets, and the drivers need, we're just trying to get that apart.
Nah, we're facing the same thing, Nick. Nobody wants to come here because there's no housing.
Yes, wait, uh, could you guys, you have a beautiful city, a beautiful location, and just get it desirable, especially on another side of COVID. We can make sure every block has broadband and a full complement of utilities and provide just enough incentives to make it profitable for the developers. I think they're gonna start to come.
Okay? Any other questions?
Uh, they've got a large health development pre-application of their community. I think we're gonna take this same company, it might be of, so it's definitely pushed this direction, but it's not being directed by the government, being uh, the market responding to overpriced housing events in Boise and a lot of people who want rural Oregon. They feel like they're getting pushed to have those, what used to be rural Oregon.
So I know we have, uh, several people in the audience before you have to go. Um, because we're the last of the three cities to meet. Um, and so the River Mill has been, uh, full and robust. Um, but I know that there's some people in, um, audience right now that are concerned that we're gonna put people out of work with construction, um, with, uh, road construction and just the construction industry. And I, I wanted to, uh, just have you speak to that for a minute because that really isn't the intention of the type to accomplish. And I know, Nick, that you guys have just signed a, a contractor, you're getting ready to help or have people do construction up there in Jon Day because you're ahead of us than here in Lakeview. So maybe you could, um, talk about that process a little bit.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, so Michelle, we, uh, we've really become the economic engine for the community. We, we've got a lot of grant revenue and a, and a modest amount of long-term, long-term, uh, to land development. So special public work financing through Business Oregon. And as a result, we're, we're the biggest investor in our community. I just ordered $250,000 worth of water and sewer line for credit development. We issued, uh, my company issued $250,000 to contract to tell a contractor to do, I didn't prove that, to use the site. Last fiscal year, I did over a million dollars in contract to develop a lot of the new road construction. All of it went to private companies. These are funds that they would not have had run for the renewed interest in housing because they just weren't issuing contracts at all. So not only did we not put anyone out of work, they're all hiring staff to, now I'm asking them to commit to working exclusively in Jon Day for like two years to build out all this infrastructure. And right now, there's so much money to consideration on the grant side. It's just a question of having the capacity to go down and bring it into your town. So I, I think this is a unique moment in our industry to go out to these funds. And I understand the fears that some men raised, but the exact opposite of what they're working on is what's happening here. We're, we're putting people to work at a level that never happened in Jon Day. Probably since the 1940s. I don't think we'd have, you know, 42 million units and 100 health sites in our community since we touched forward to work to help them. So it's probably been seven or eight years.
Thank you. Thanks, Nick. Up to you, council.
I have nothing else. Uh, yeah, my question.
Mike, you have anything?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so I can just go back?
We can't do public comment today.
Oh, you can't?
This is a work session, if, it's attached on here.
Sorry. It's not much going on, actually, in there, though, yes, huh?
Well, I mean, it says that. Well, it's the discretion of the mayor, I apologize.
No, I don't be rude, I don't wanna get in touch. Um, does anybody have anything for Nick before he takes off? And then we can call in to Dan. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Everybody, can you hear that?
You wanna call Dan?
I think he's on.
Uh, well.
We can't hear him.
We can't hear him.
Hey, Dan, call my cell phone or I'll put you on speaker.
Well, you can, the mayor can allow that. Ray, I think we should be asking what the, can, can ask questions.
That's fine, Nick, that's what you guys want.
I think, yeah, I think.
So if these people are here, their questions, your answer is just.
They am, please, support. Yeah.
You there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, good. All right, so we're gonna take some questions.
Okay. I, I want to listen in here for a bit, some research and some information. Just want to come down.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so that's something that was, that was brought up here as well. Um, and the interesting thing with the bay is the chip sealer is what's different than the bay machine. Uh, a chip sealer is essentially, it's a maintenance product that a lot of counties have, and O'Conne County has it. And, uh, and what it is, it just puts down oil and essentially gravel over the top of your current pavement to prolong the life of it. In Burnham, it's a $1.30 payment project coming this year. That is still. In branch handle one point three million dollar payment project coming this year, that is still getting um you know, I'm talking with our engineers, they've done it coming. And and chip sealing does not replace paint, you still have to paint, so put that down, you can't put chip sealing uh down to a chip spreader down on on um just dirt roads, because it just bump up the empty basement. So um there's that, however, when that came about, the problem is that the um the uh the legislators, the legislators had asked for a capital request, and I put in a capital request for that month, and that month it was essentially seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to choose um to create a city, so we could get it. So um and one of the things, and we have already locked in the payment here, uh and they still they still have to use a payment project, you still have to pay, they still have to give competitive debt. Uh already locked around here and hasn't had one in years, a payment project, they hope to from now in the area, because they've been way too high. So you can get these other ones, uh it's still competitive debt process, but that had nothing to do with the chip spreading machine uh in and of itself. And the concept behind that was to have um you know shared labor between what all this you have, a lot of people overpaying, charging, they should have a co-op, right? It's part of a co-op. People are, and and what we're doing is we're sharing resources to to compensation, good thing. So if you have what, three, four people in the public works group? If you have them doing all of your six series, who's following the parks, who's doing everything else? Now, and and we have one or two from my city, one or two from ten uh from the town of Lakeview, one or two from the town of John Day. Now we have a five, six person group, they go from town to town and and chip seal our streets and what we otherwise couldn't do. I'm sure that all of our cities have such poor streets that you're keeping them in the next five summers, and as soon as as soon as once repaired, you know, five summers later, it's gonna be be repaired again. But think about it, have we been able to come up with a cost to aid our streets, answers that, none of them. And so how do you fix it? Well, there's a solution, and that's what we're trying to come up with. But it's kind of a point at this point, because uh you get the shoes. So that that covered down, and that was just another part of that sharing, that uh you know, you still have to these these companies, because you start to find a little somewhere, you start to find a rock somewhere. Uh so uh just just words covering that, and I kind of apologize, I didn't do the best, just ask to uh to hit back there, hopefully I covered that.
Okay. So, Mike, you wanna go?
So yeah, I had a question about uh it's basically about the math that uh Nick Green was talking about. So in the example, he was saying that uh if there was a a piece of vacant land, uh the tax revenue to the town would be, in his example, three hundred dollars a year. But if someone built a house on it, the tax revenue would be four thousand dollars a year. Right? And I think what he, I heard him say was that the proposal is that if you if you go with this program that's been proposed for five years, the four thousand dollars a year does not, that tax revenue does not come to the town. And so my question is, where does that twenty thousand dollars?
It comes to the town, it doesn't go to the other taxing districts, like the library, the cemetery, the hospital, that kind of stuff. They would get the base tax rate for the property.
Like the school district, the school district. It's not gonna touch any of that, it'd be like the TIF that that we're gonna maybe pass, we're thinking about it.
So so just to make sure I'm understanding Shannon, so the the police, the sheriff and the library and the schools, all the other public services that the town normally you know, pay pays for.
Just listen on your taxes, listen on your taxing.
Yeah, they they you wouldn't get the increase, what from what I understand from Nick. They whatever the property was, we can tax that. Say it's three hundred dollars in this example. And then it's improved on, and and for five years, they would get the the base where where it's unimproved, and then the town would get the the improved taxes, whatever was left over.
Who who's they, who would get the?
The town.
Actually, it's not the town.
It's the urban renewal.
It's the urban renewal entity. It is separate, it and it has its own board.
So who is that? Who, so that's so in my example, or the one?
We haven't developed it yet, we haven't, we haven't included it yet.
It's not part of R three. It's not part of R three at all.
It would have to be voted on.
By by the council or by the voters?
Well
So we'd create a new legal entity, and that legal entity would get the tax revenue?
Oh, no, but we have an urban renewal, we don't have one, so I guess it would be new then. Yeah.
And and that entity would get the money?
Correct.
For for the five years or whatever, to subsidize the growth and development. And and but yet, the increase in population at the schools and in the town would have to be funded from other tax money that pays for police and library and schools, is that right?
I I guess I'm not correct in what you
So my so my question is if we're
You mean interest and police stuff and?
Yeah, no, so we're we're promoting growth, good thing, right, that's good.
Right.
But we're taking tax money on that new growth, and we're putting it someplace other than the town's general revenue, is that right?
It it's my understanding that the the entities that are receiving the money, their tax base is basically frozen for whatever period we decide, if that's what we go with, okay? The money goes into the urban growth renewal fund to provide incentives for people to come in and continue to build and provide more growth to the town.
So so the, in the example that Nick Green made, so the twenty thousand dollars, four four thousand per year for five years, that twenty thousand goes to the developers? Or to the?
It goes to us.
It provides incentives.
It goes to us to to reduce um maybe uh water bills or or whatever, right?
So, the urban renewal area, the urban renewal entity receives the money. And if the town, for example, you put a a half a million dollar home onto a vacant piece of land, the town could incentivize you with the additional money that comes in from the property tax from that urban renewal area. Once the town has received back that money, then we for whatever amount of time, six years, ten years, twenty, whatever, then then we stop collecting that money. We need to figure out what the formula is on that, do we want an urban renewal area? What do we want the incentives to be? These are all question marks, we haven't decided anything on that. We have identified in the urban renewal area with LCP, a portion for urban renewal. We also have to identify in that urban renewal area, what types of projects the town will be able to fund. So once the town has regained back their twenty thousand, the remaining amount in the urban renewal area can go towards helping developers with projects, i.e. buying pipe, putting in the street, taking care of those additional expenses that a private company would have to pay. The town can say, we've we've tagged this in our urban renewal area to be a project that we wanna work on. Uh move from a vacant piece of land to potentially urban renewal area uh identifies a piece of property that we want to put a grocery store. Well, I don't know where that would be. But we've we've identified that. When the grocery store says we wanna come, the town can then say we have the money in our urban renewal area because of the additional taxes that we're receiving to help buy the pipe, to help put in the infrastructure, the ground stuff, to help with the streets. And that then helps a grocery store with the that cost, will help them to have a pencil out better.
So make sure, I don't think I'm understanding, because you just said you're gonna you're gonna have additional taxes.
Okay.
Can I take? Can I take two questions?
Yes.
When you set up an urban renewal area,
Yep.
you set up a very small, very defined area.
Yep.
And so the taxes are frozen inside that area for everybody else, but the taxes in the rest of the county, the taxes in the rest of the town are not frozen. So it will minimize the taxes coming to the school and the police and all of that for that ten block or sixteen block or whatever space.
Yes.
While hopefully, the increase of population and people and attractiveness and commercial benefit to the rest of the community will grow the rest of that pot enough that it will minimize the impact on the rest of the tax receivers during the period of urban renewal growth.
So, yes, yes, that I got, I got all that.
Yes. Okay.
But something you just said, which was, we can we can use that extra tax money to, you know, subsidize developers' costs. What extra tax money are you talking about?
Well, it's all gonna depend, I I mean if there's a
Because we go from three hundred for an empty lot up to three thousand dollars.
But we just heard that they're not, they've got a tax holiday, right? That's the incentive that we're giving.
No. No, that the person who's being taxed pays the same amount.
Mike, it's like Creekside, let's take, let's just take Creekside, you know where that is, huh, yeah?
Yep.
Why why do you think Thornton and Philip Burton, all those guys aren't building houses over there?
Can't, don't, no market, I don't know.
Yeah, well, there's a market, people wanna buy houses, but they don't, I don't think they have the money to build them, or or whatever. And with some incentives, they might be able to do that, and we might be able to offer some housing. You don't think so?
No, I no, I don't know, I just wonder where the money's
All the kind of things, yeah, I don't know who it is.
Where does the money come from to give those incentives? Or are you just saying it's a tax holiday, that's the incentive, or the town is actually giving money?
The 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 money is coming from every year there's a tax increase. It's the increase money that goes into the rural fund, into the urban renewal.
Increase on my taxes, right, outside the urban renewal area?
Like one, like if you were in the re- in the urban growth renewal, okay, and you paid the three hundred dollars, okay?
No. Yes, right.
That's what the tax is that year, okay?
Right.
The next year, maybe that tax went up to three hundred and fifty dollars. That fifty dollars goes into the urban growth fund instead of into the general tax fund. And it's that fifty dollars that grows.
But only if you're in the urban growth fund.
And pays the incentives. Only if you're in that one area.
Not if you're in a minority established neighborhood.
Right. Only from the urban growth fund.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Dan?
Yeah, I can elaborate on there, I can just start with, first off, the R three, it's not the same thing, you know, the the urban renewal area that you're trying to establish, burn ship, that was started over a December, it was finalized. Uh and and one thing I have to keep in mind is that it's simply it's an economic development tool, so um everything that everybody just said absolutely is correct, it sounds like there's a lot of of knowledge base there. But it's not, it's only in the area, so like what the town decides to put in that area burns, we can put up twenty percent of our lands that in in burns into that uh URA, so we put in seventeen percent. That means of one hundred percent of all the tax base, only seventeen percent of those affected properties that the supply team, nobody's losing money, they can assist with what they have right now, but for the creation of the urban renewal, which otherwise a vacant piece of property that say part of your incentives is uh to pay system development charges, right? Well, that 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 tax revenue, that's gonna get diverted with the exception of the schools to the URA. It's ran by the board in most cities. The council reserve board, there's a separate, there's a separate um budget setup for the URA. The URA is separately, and you have contributory bylaws from stereo operating procedures. And in that standard operating procedures, you can say, what do we want to incentivize here? Maybe it is a developer's development charges. Well, the city doesn't necessarily list out the development charges, it can be URA charges in. Uh it gives you pay for it, but then that can pay back the city, so that the city budget is not necessarily uh losing that, meaning that the developers don't have to pay for the development charges. If it's a vacant land, maybe you're you're up to um uh seven percent of the overall cost of a project uh for for a new build. Um maybe it's up to fifteen percent for a lighted something. And then you can put a cap on that, say up to twenty five thousand dollars. Uh there's there's a lot, it's really what what your agency wants to do, uh what is put together. But I think what what a lot of people forget is that if you don't have something in place where the, you know, who draws in the house, as we announced, URA, it burns almost all of our lighted commercial property has been sold off. And they've been sitting empty for years, and they've been purchased because people are excited, because now they can they can take our lighted building and turn it into something better, even sitting there for years, increasing the tax money. So I mean, if you don't have a mechanism like that in place, everybody, it's not, it's not these three cities is trying to do that, there's urban inlays all across the state of Oregon. And and it's essentially it's a tax benefit financing, that urban renewals can provide grants and other incentives to build infrastructure within the urban renewal, so it's just another tool that a lot of these stories have not tapped into.
Any other questions?
I I guess one, is there a role for the PPP in the URA program? Or are they completely different issues? The PPP is why we're here today, right? The 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 R three or, yeah, or?
R three, okay.
Yeah. Is there an overlap?
Um I I wanna try to come super separate, because they're both really big topics. And I don't wanna overwhelm or confuse people, but if you wanna come see me, I can I can help you with that. I just, I don't wanna overwhelm everybody, because really, we're talking about R three right now.
And that's what I'm asking about.
Um is there a room for private-public partnerships within R three? Is that the question?
No, so my question is, is there an overlap between the URA topic that we've just been talking about? Is is the R three going to play a role in that URA process?
No, no.
Completely separate?
One hundred percent completely separate. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I was getting too detailed with my brain with that question, sorry.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
I got a few questions.
Yeah.
So, I guess you didn't want overlap, but you guys opened the gate on this one, so.
Okay.
You're gonna make two entities, the URA and R three control the growth of our town, is that the way I understand it? You're creating two new entities, that both are gonna take money to fund to do what we're doing now.
Um my experience is how, what new houses are under construction?
You can't, go 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 talk to any contractor, if you can't get a contractor to build your house, you're a year and a half waiting, let's even talk to him. Who are you gonna get?
Uh we're actually looking for a deva- a developer that can come in and do more than one.
Well, we have that developer, gotta get a contractor out as well.
Yeah, down Creekside, we have that, and you brought that up. Well, what's your opinion of it not being built?
Oh, you mean housing over there? I don't know, I've gotta talk to a lot of
The infrastructure is completely in over there, we put it in.
Well, everything's ready to go, no, I know that.
It's laid out.
Yeah.
Buy a lot, build a house.
That's what I'm wondering why, why that's not taken.
I'm wondering too.
Yeah.
So there's lots available. All they gotta do is buy a lot, build a house. Infrastructure's in, and it's not out. I guess I don't understand where we think that this URA and R three deal is gonna help them. Because those lots have been sitting there for fifteen years.
The URI, the URA can incentivize, so
We gotta give them a lot, it's private property, right?
That's what, it's a a a partner That's what it's a a partnership between the town and the developer of those lots.
We had a developer come in.
But there's no developer there right now, is there?
No, but the infrastructure that you're talking about helping them with is in. All the city water, all the city sewer, all the power.
I get it. I get it. So what we would do is incentivize them with the the increase of what's going on on that property, piece of property. So if they're gonna.
Tax breaks.
Correct. So if they're going to put a five hundred thousand dollar home, we can incentivize them with whatever the URA comes up with to put that in to help them pencil out as a developer to make it make sense. I think the reason why no houses have been built on Creekside is it's too expensive. They would lose money.
Okay, but that's private industry. That it takes the market and that's just what those folks said. They're not trying to get in the middle of the market.
Alls we're trying to do is incentivize them. Town would give them as a rebate.
Okay, and I but this is a premature question, I guess, cause you're not that far down the road. Does anybody have any idea what an R three staff would cost? Not yet, okay. I was just reading through the literature I got, so that's where I came up with these questions.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't have an answer, that's good.
Well, no, well, they must have an idea because you just said that you wanted to advertise for an executive director.
We do. I don't know what that number is. We have the job description. We don't have, we haven't discussed how much that would what we're looking at. I asked that at our at our meeting last week. But I don't know what that number is, but I do have a job description for what an exec.
But it's gonna be him and add a group of people then, or or a group of people?
There there's a board of directors. Board of directors is a council member from each town and an executive director.
Paid positions, I guess, is what I'm asking.
No, they're not. The only paid position is the executive director and I don't know that number.
Okay. That was that was one of my questions. Okay, and then my literature talks about an initial buy-in.
I don't know that number.
Okay.
But there will be and as soon as the number comes to fruition, it's gonna be given to council.
Okay, so then they're talking about taking two from Lakeview, two from John Day and two from Burns and setting them up for the summer?
So and we're gonna have one at large, probably from.
No, I'm not not council member workers. Say they gotta, that guy is the guy that's on the screen there. I can't remember his name right now, but.
His name's Dan, his name's Dan Brown.
Dan, okay, sorry, Dan. But he's talking about taking two people from Lakeview's crews so the rest of them can stay and mow the lawns and two people from John Day's crews and two people from Burns crews.
You're talking about the paving.
Paving or whatever the project is, that would be on the R three deal.
The paving, yeah.
Jeff, could you lose two people for the summer? Not usually. So you'd have to hire two more people to fill those positions?
Well, well, we wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna do it for the summer. I I wouldn't mind doing it for a couple of weeks, but we can't afford to have two of our public works crews go up to John Day or Burns for a month. I could conceive of it as like a week or two weeks, maybe. Um I would like to see if we do people put people on loan, that it is for less than a week. Uh because we can't afford to lose them in town.
Yeah, I'm and again, I'm just maybe we think you're getting restricted since the literature I got.
No, no, no. No, no, no. I'm glad for the questions.
I'd love to see the literature on it, but these are some of the questions I came up with.
No, I. No, I like the questions. I appreciate it.
So your meeting started out today and you're gonna do housing and broadband?
That's that's what we're looking at, yes.
And so far, all Dan's talked about is paving and chip sealing and equipment.
That's done. That's done. That's off the dock.
We're using as a. So the reason why he did that is talked about it is because the last time that we met for R three, we sent out a pocket and part of the literature that we gave for the pocket was that we were asking legislation for a chip sealer to pay for that with grant money. Um and we didn't get it. So we don't so it's a moot point.
Okay.
That's that's why you brought that up.
So my final question, and thanks for indulging me here a little bit.
Sure.
But R three basically goes out and gets grants for the county, for the.
Not for the county.
Well, for this entity.
For Lakeview, yeah, for R three.
For this this entity, for R three. We got a guy in there and his staff.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that correct? Is it one guy or is one still?
So who's writing the grants right now?
I know.
Me.
That was my whole point.
I'm writing the grant. I I wrote one for uh Build Back Better. We didn't get that either.
You just got fifteen million dollars. Good job. What I'm trying to say, do we really need a whole nother entity for something you just pulled off all by yourself?
Well, here's here's the thing Scott, too, is the way we perceive three R, or R three, is R three, is um is say say in a year uh we get a hundred and fifty million or uh one point five million in grants. And that goes to the the R three. We don't have to. It's self-sufficient. There's no money going coming from Lakeview, Burns or John Day.
Well.
I mean, that's that's our hope that that happens.
Your literature says they're attaching grant funds just like there is right now.
Cause they're applying for their own grants as well.
Yes.
So.
So you're competing for the same money and paying an entity that's.
No, no, no.
No, we'll get more if there's three cities involved.
So let me use a legal.
And the the legislature will will grant more money with that than than one town, the way I understand it.
So it's a multi-tiered answer, so be patient.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, I kind of look at this and and my apologies if I was if I was uh just leading the group there. I was just talking about the paving issue that had been brought up. Um that is a big effect of the debt issue and that was the concept behind it. Um the questions that are being asked in this room for all the technical rules was asked in our work study session was kind of prompted to me last week. And the scale that I'm looking for housing, um the there's a lot of issues that come up. Union contracts, can can towns really do all this? And so we decided, hey, are we fighting off more than we can? What what do we really want to do to enjoy the experience? And the reality is, and I've heard already in this room, is like we can't get business, we can't get school teachers and doctors and all these people out here nurses because we don't have housing. So if I give up some housing and a lot of times you go housing, broadband, there's just nothing in there. Um what is R three that we get down to is some sharing, the media, whatever, we can like. Here is the capital project, we have a major concern buddy, you know, we have a chair council, a lawn council. And there's marketing center, they just run it there. If we share all the tax, we can cut each one of our departmental staff a lot of money. If you have a project manager that can be real estate, I'm sure Michelle's high of cake. Uh Nick Green's high of cake, well, I'm high of cake. However, there's only twenty four hours in a day where you're dealing with the person that walks into the counter to complain about how high the water is up there. Now, this is Joe, this dog is off the leash again, right? What we're we're the uh firefighters to do that, you have a city manager that in a small town like like ours, he wears a lot of hats. So what gets up sometimes is we put so much of the small detail and try to keep everybody be definitely happy and keep council happy because they wanna know what's happening all the time. And that's the way it should work. But it takes away from these major capital projects. And so if you have a person that has the leverage and the ability and the knowledge to do that. I'm a retired police chief, I'm the city manager for a year and a half, right? I might have a degree in public administration, but I've learned water projects, air projects, things that I know. But I don't think I've learned a lot yet. I still don't have a high level of expertise in a lot of areas um that other people have when it comes to these management things. Michelle, I think you have a marketing background, background. I mean, we all have a different, you know, trade and walk the line. But when it when it comes to it is what does the garden do? And by having a son, a child, a boat, we could we could individually hire consultants. We could, we could, we could, yeah. If you're trying to consult on just one project, probably twice, what it could cost for for us to do first projects and 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 once, by just sharing that intellectual, that's really what it's about. Because and and another thing that came up was we don't all have the same thing. We have a police department, we have an airport that just got bumped up a tier because of because of our growth, right? We don't, we have a a a master plan development that's beautiful, that that's in the works right now. And uh construction crews are an issue. But now if you have a project manager and it can leverage a construction crew that works with us on multiple projects, they can go to different areas. These are not our employees. It's all it's all through a project manager that represents our group. And so I think you gotta look at it from a business aspect and let some agents of the government relate. Look, if it doesn't work, you shudder. You withdraw. You can back out of it, right? The urban renewal is something completely separate, but if the R three in and of itself, it becomes a former government, the city doesn't want, my city doesn't want. Get rid of it. Back out of it. But if we're trying, that's that's the way you gotta look at it. If we're trying something new, they leverage these projects, we can't otherwise. My understanding of this, let's see, actually they have a lot of land in construction too. What don't you have to do? You shouldn't have anybody there broke through those deals. That's why you don't have.
Well, thank you, Dan, but I guess that was my point. I don't know why. I I'd say I personally would rather see Lakeview hire that person than turn it over to somebody who has three other cities involved. I that's all that's all I was saying about that. I didn't mean to offend anybody by it or anything. I just I just think we can handle this internally as well as turning it over to somebody that has no ties to Lakeview whatsoever, I guess, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, any other questions for Dan? Dan, do you have any questions? Michelle, anything?
No, I just I think it's been great conversation.
Well, Dan, thanks for your time.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Okay. Now that being said, uh no other matters, uh any staff comments? No, council comment?
Thank you for your questions cause made a lot more learning, too. Yeah.
Okay, and here none. We'll adjourn the meeting. That's five oh four.